So without a successful passage of Measure E, we are back to looking to other options to mitigate that projected deficit. And that's some of the information we're going to share with you today. I know the IBA also is looking closely at what options we have to mitigate that deficit. But ultimately, after, you know, other new revenue sources to help bring down our projected deficit, we are going to have to look towards budget reductions in the general fund to get us to a balanced budget for fiscal year 26. The goal will be that those are ongoing budget reductions in order to bring us to a place where the general fund is structurally balanced, meaning our ongoing revenues meet our ongoing expenditures. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rolando and Ben to walk through the presentation, and then we're happy to take questions afterwards as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, Council President and Council members, and the travel Department of Finance Director. Let's go to the next slide. So just to start giving you an outline of the contents of the report, we begin the report with what we call baseline projections, meaning basically looking at FY25 service levels and projecting those out for the next five years without really any service enhancements and basically pulling out any one-time expenditures and revenues. That accounts for about half of the report. It's more the technical side of the report. After the baseline projections, we include what we call beyond the baseline, and those are expenditures that are more, to some extent, require some policy discussion. It does include, for example, new facilities. If we have any facilities that are scheduled to open over the next five years, new fire stations, new libraries, those need to be staffed. This year, we included homelessness services expenditures. Some of them have to do with replacing some of the shelters that are scheduled to close. It also includes the addition of 1,000 beds, and obviously, that again is subject to council consideration. It also includes some stormwater mitigation costs related to clear channel clearing. From there, we talk about potential mitigation actions. Some of these are some of the mitigation actions that we can implement in order to close the shortfall. Those include, for example, the trash fee allowed by Measure B, Measure C, that's currently in litigation, and things like that. There's a section on future fiscal considerations that talk about some of the larger policy items and how those relate to the outlook, for example, of the Climate Action Plan. And then we conclude the report by talking about infrastructure needs. And we do this because normally, we have our, this is really, the focus is more operating in nature, talking about the general fund. But we know that on the capital side, there are also competing needs that are going to be needing, basically competing for the same resources as the operating side. Diving into the numbers, this table reflects, again, baseline expenditures and revenues. And by baseline, we mean maintaining current service levels. Going from left to right, you can see a balanced budget for FY25. However, that includes about $203 million in one-time resources that were used to support ongoing expenditures. Once you remove those one-time resources, then that translates to the next column in FY26, and you see that significant structural deficit of about $258.2 million. Again, this is baseline only. The one important thing to highlight here is that the baseline expenditures do include reserve contributions based on our reserve policy. That's subject to the discretion of both the mayor and the council. Given the large structural deficit that we're facing, that will likely, that'll be very challenging to make those contributions. So once you remove about $63 million of general fund and resource management reserves, that brings down the structural deficit for 26 to about $195 million.
By and large, we find the outlook's baseline projections to be reasonable. That means that we really are facing a shortfall of $260 million next year, just to provide the same services that we are this year. There are actions that we can take to bring that shortfall down. The resources that Pecu just mentioned total just under $200 million. Those would go a long way towards closing the deficit that we are facing. But even if all of those mitigations move forward, we're still facing a $60 million shortfall. And that shortfall may well be higher, given recent trends we've seen in sales tax revenues and in increases to the city's pension payment. To put it very simply, the city will need to make real cuts to close the shortfall. And to that point, it is critical that the city pursue any and all resources that it can to limit those cuts to services as much as possible. Those actions include moving towards adopting a full cost recovery trash fee by July, as voters authorized two years ago. And they also include things that the city can do now, this year, so that we can have less drastic cuts next year. Any savings that can be achieved through hiring freezes and expenditure reductions this year can help provide resources for next year. And any revenues that the city can pursue now, such as increasing the city's parking meter rates, which could generate up to $4 million in additional resources, this year would also help. It is critical that the city move forward with mitigations immediately. Not doing so will only make next year's already challenging budget that much more daunting.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members, city attorney, IBA. I am Corinne Wilson with the San Diego Municipal Employees Association. I'm here today to continue to urge you to take action on the budget deficit identified in the five-year financial outlook. MEA came to you and the mayor to start this conversation about six weeks ago. We've been bringing forward suggestions that we believe will mitigate future pain, future harm, but it needs to start now. We are losing time, as the IBA was pointing out. There have been individual conversations, a presentation to the Budget and Government Efficiency Committee on December 11th, and a memo to you on January 7th. The IBA, as I said, has put forward similar recommendations to ours. Thank you to the IBA and to their staff. We are disappointed that there's no indication that what is needed will be done and in the timeframe that it needs to be done. Today would have been a great time to start with low-hanging fruit. I mean, why not? So far, there's only been a hiring freeze, but no action on easy revenue options or cutting unnecessary contracts. In fact, at MEA, we continue to get requests to outsource city work while employees hear about 20% cuts in their department. How do you think that makes them feel? We're getting a lot of calls, very concerned. All of that, all that's been done so far is the hiring freeze, and that's removing the employees that actually provide the services to residents. This is unsustainable without also freezing, cutting, right sizing the services that these positions provide. There needs to be swift and holistic response to the forecasted budget deficit. It's irresponsible to just do a hiring freeze in a vacuum. Taking action now can help mitigate future pain and harm. This is a strong mayor, strong council, form of government. You are not powerless. Please do all that you can. We look to you as our partners and our leaders to make the right decisions for the residents and the employees. It will be difficult, but taking responsible leadership shouldn't be. So thank you very much.
Caesar, fellow classmates in this university of life, I envy you because you occupy a hierarchical position, decision-making position. By the way, thank you, sir. Get ready, the police might apprehend you for telling the truth. You are not lying. It is caused by governance, caused by the ineptness of our leadership. Where is the mayor now? This is a critical moment. This is a critical benchmark for tomorrow. Where is he? The leadership of this city, caused by governance. Thank you. You're honest. And from this benchmark, mile, kilometer force, I may say, let us, I hope, the economic development department here must be present too. All our action to shore up, defeat this deficient, deficient, must be an all-out war. I will give you example, Consulero Rivera, my classmate. In our community, we need investment in education, training, infrastructure, for example, dispensing machine for pure water, so we could only get 10 cents per gallon. That's an example. Stimulus, develop the land, vacant land along the creek line to influence, harness the working new immigrants coming in this great country. It's open. What are we doing, Consulero Rivera? You have spent money for tacos, 500 pieces, according to your staff.
Thank you. That does conclude your time.
Something is wrong.
I'm sorry, the five-minute timer? Sorry, that doesn't, thank you.
Mr. Javier, this is the third time today you've interrupted and spoken over the city clerk or somebody speaking, so this is your first warning. Please conform yourself to the two-minute timer.
Thank you so much. Enjoy seeing you at District 3. Thank you for the presentation. So here we go. Let's stick together and look at this as a golden opportunity. A couple areas for me. We'll start with the net debt capacity of $475 million. That's a lot of money, and it can help us. So let's look at that. The general fund debt service costs are high, and I don't know how, I don't fully under, I'm just learning new things about this debt policy. So I don't know how we can work with that, this cost, but it's, it's big. Looking at the employee, the employer, our beloved employees in the pension end, the actuarial valuation, I think it said that the number one cause of the increase was the over 3.5% salary increases. So I hope I'm right on that, but regardless, here's what I want to say. We have really tried our best, and we've done a good job of honoring our employees and their salary needs. So here we are, dear employees, we have to put a freeze on all of that. We have to, we've given you those funds, and we need more, but we can't. And we're going to be, it's going to be tricky, because the key performance indicators that we hope to look at, we won't be able to look at, because you're getting paid more, but you have less time to do your work in. So I, I don't know how we're going to manage all this, but love to all of you on that. With the deferred maintenance on the infrastructure, I have no idea how we're going to stop the projects and deal with that and no longer defer that maintenance.
Thank you. Your time has concluded. My apologies, your time has concluded.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. Yeah, it's pretty grim for San Diego the next five years. Good luck how we can be working on our issues. I know the city of Oakland is in kind of the same state that San Diego is in, and San Diego and Oakland seem to be kind of connected in, I haven't seen much large cities in California in a worse condition. So good luck in what, in working with Oakland and considering Oakland's decision-making, what they have to go through at this time. There's a bit of comfort in that, and good luck in what, in what you can be doing. With the fire issues in LA right now, if we can practice good governance, I think we can offer some good lessons to what LA is going to be starting to go through. From our flood issues, if we can show them a certain amount of dignity in how we're trying to work out our issues, they may really need that. And we can work on it ourselves. I think if we work on our tech accountability practices, work towards openness, work towards clarity and trust with community, continue building, you know, good community practices, those are really important steps in whatever next steps we have to be doing. And I hope we can be making those steps. If we want to, you know, work as a good community process, trust develops, and our problems can then be more easily solved and solved in, in terms of camaraderie and good spirits in how to address our issues. So, and I think we do have to be addressing the future of tax raises for housing and, you know, important things like that. And good luck how that conversation can be a decent conversation in the next five years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eldil. Hi, my name is Eldil Mastro, and, you know, I'm, as a small landlord, I deal with people that are, you know, middle-income people every day. I live with them on the same property, shop with these people. And believe me, you guys are coming across as extreme elitists. You've received 100, 130% raise increases in the last four years. The city council alone, salary has gone up from $75,000 a year to $173,000 a year. Laura Jones's salary, who just spoke on the housing, makes a half a million dollars a year. Now, the average person on, who's trying to pay their bills and work every day, they're the ones affected. You guys makes, you've guys pushed past any kind of problems that you would have paying your bills, because you just take incredible raise increases. Higher, I've never even heard of people getting raise increases like that for doing exactly the same job, over and over again. The real problem is, is that you need to cut back on the pork. Maybe we ought to lay, lay low on bike lanes for a while. We've already spent $50,000, $50 million on bike lanes, and we're committed to spend another 150 million on bike lanes? Maybe there's other issues, like public safety, that are much more important, like maintaining the storm drains and preparing, cutting brush away for fire. Maybe that's more important than bike lanes today. And, or the salaries, you guys ought to be fine, even take a cutback, because you were supposed to get businesspeople involved in this city council. That's why some of these raises were approved. And we got, we got a guy that thinks he knows everything, and he's, he was, he was a swim coach. You know, he doesn't have much economic capability or knows anything about small business or anything else with that.
Your time has concluded. Thank you for concluding comment.
IBA projects that $800,000 per month could be received by the city by increasing parking rates to the, through administrative action. We knew approximately six weeks ago that unfortunately, we wouldn't have the revenue from the proposed sales tax. Why haven't we instituted those changes to begin receiving that revenue?
So we've been working on a holistic plan to make all of the amendments that were discussed to our parking program, to our, to our parking fees. I understand your concern, I understand MEA's position, but we've been trying to approach this with a more holistic kind of approach to create a longer path and a longer increased revenue stream that has, I think, more benefits to the city and the general fund specifically than just an increase from $1.25 an hour to $2.50 an hour today. That's, that's really the approach that we've been.
If I could, Councilmember, I would note that, by and large, I suspect my office is going to be in agreement with, or the Department of Finance and the administration might be in agreement with my office, on some of the larger policy changes that should be looked at when we're looking at parking meters as a whole. Being able to charge for surge pricing is something the city should investigate. Adjusting regulations around the community parking districts themselves and the formation of them is something that should be investigated and potentially amended. The split of revenue between the city as an entity and the community parking districts is something that should be investigated. Those are all things that should be done. They will take time. In the meantime, the opportunity to simply increase rates now and also request those additional policy changes and considerations to be brought forward to this council two, three months down the line, that's an option as well, and it's one that we would encourage.
Thank you, Charles. And Matt, I don't want to beat up on you here, but I'm just so frustrated, because we're having a sky-as-falling conversation, because we are in a really tough situation. Five-year outlook is bad. We knew it was going to be bad. We've known it's going to be bad, absent additional revenue. And what I'm not seeing is an urgency on the revenue side to, to minimize the pain that our constituents have to feel. We know that there's going to be pain. Like, I don't think anybody on this dais isn't acutely aware that we're going to have to have some very difficult conversations with, with San Diegans. What I am 100% not okay with, though, is having those conversations before we've done everything we can to increase revenue, especially revenue that is going to be received from visitors to this city. We just went through one of the busiest tourism periods of the year. Folks use San Diego as its play, as their playground. And we're going to be telling folks in communities that their library hours are going to be cut, that we're going, we're scaring city employees and telling them that we're not sure we're going to be able to go through with the compensation philosophy that we've taken so much pride in, that people are concerned about their jobs. I am not okay with that. And every day that passes only increases the pain that San Diegans are going to have to feel. So I understand the importance of doing this holistically. I, I respect that, I appreciate that. But delaying it, delaying actions that can be taken now, I have no explanation for. And it's making me, I, I mean this sincerely, every day that passes, I get more pissed off about it, because it is simply increasing the pain that's going to be felt by city employees and by San Diegans. So the only thing that I disagreed with, from Ms. Wilson and MEA, it, the time is not now, it was yesterday, and it was, it was, it was five weeks ago. Over two years ago, we requested analysis from the IBA about potential revenue opportunities. In the report on revenue, the IBA found we could garner millions by charging residents for parking at our beaches and our bays. Again, playgrounds for tourists. These are world-class assets that tourists use. They contribute absolutely nothing to maintaining them, and our residents are shouldered with the cost of maintaining these tourist destinations, and now we're having conversations like the one that we're having. That has sat on a shelf for a couple of years. The parking opportunity is sitting on the shelf day after day after day. And I'm not going to engage in a conversation about cuts until I see seriousness from the administration about revenue. So count me out on any cut action that's presented to me, unless I'm starting to see some, some actual revenue action from the administration. I know that we have that power. I get it. And we, and I'm, I have no doubt, again, that this council is going to make tough decisions. But we are, we are waiting unnecessarily to bring in revenue that will decrease pain for San Diegans, and we cannot continue to wait. So again, I appreciate the work, Matt. I don't want to beat up on you. I know that you get thrown in this hot seat. But it is super frustrating, because we know what these conversations are going to sound like down the road, and they don't have to be as hard as they're going to be. They're going to be hard enough as it is, but they don't have to be as difficult as they're going to be. And when we're presented with a five-year outlook that feels much more like a political posturing document than an actual financial outlook, that makes me upset. We're including $33 million for a homelessness facility that this council rejected and not including revenue that this council has shown a desire to see flow into our coffers. I won't take any additional time, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and the work on this. It's not a pretty picture. I am still a little confused about why SD serves wasn't able to give us an accurate projection on our pension payment, and of course, that's up to SD serves to do. I know that you've done a lot of work with them to try and amortize the cost over time, and I thank you for that. They were not considering a better way for citizens over generations to pay these costs. And so I'm glad that you did do that. I'm just disappointed that they weren't able to give us an entirely accurate picture of what we were going to be seeing. I mean, I hear Councilwoman Illo Rivera's comments on revenue generation. I think that you're bringing something, I'm not on the budget committee, but I have a feeling the budget committee would be happy to hear things on that, if those items were brought forward on the things that IBA had already identified that we could possibly be doing. In terms of the infrastructure fund contribution, I, I will not be wa, be voting to waive that. If that's asked for in the budget, I will not. I believe we can use it to prioritize towards our infrastructure and will lessen the impact on the general fund. I will also not be voting to waive the climate equity fund. These funds are intended to help protect our city's most vulnerable communities to climate change, and we see what happens when we don't, because it can be a much higher price tag later, just like the infrastructure fund. Let's not continue to push that down the road. We need to build the fire stations in Oti and in Black Mountain, and those are developer funds for the building, for the CIP. Of course, we will have to staff them, but that's not, that's not until down the road. But we need to build them, because the fire response times are getting harder and harder to make in those two communities in particular. I believe that the EMS funds should be used for the EMS program for now, because we are still a year, a year and a half into our alliance model. We are still learning how to bill clients, our billing systems, our two AMR and FOLK. I just, we're supposed to be using that for EMS to train our own EMTs and our own paramedics, because FOLK was charging us way too much for their unit hours before. And so I just, I think it's a little short-sighted to drain the EMS program at this moment. I understand that's a fight we can have down the line, and you're looking for all sources of revenue, but that's where I, I would plant my flag for now, because answering our 911 calls on time every time is the basic function of our city, is public safety. I'd also like a deeper understanding of what our contractual expenses are. I appreciate the mayor's memo very much that he issued. I mean, I know I wish, I hear that we want more urgency on the revenue sources part, but I do appreciate identifying, getting rid of outside real estate deals that we do not need in outside contractual expenses. So I was looking at our FY25 adopted budget, and over the past three years, our spending on external contracts and services has hovered around $250 million. A lot of that we need. I understand that. The city can't provide every single service that, that our citizens need, but I would like a deeper understanding of what exactly those contracts are, because that's a $250 million chunk that I've never really seen had X-ray vision into. And since the mayor did say we are going to be looking at contracts, I'd love to think about that. Any day, I mean, I love our external partners, they provide a lot of services to the city, but every day, all day, I will prioritize our MEA and our 127 employees over Deloitte. I will. So I just, we'd love a deeper briefing on that from the IBA as well, since that's something we're going to be digging into, and hopefully, we can continue to right-size this. It's going to be hard, but state and federal grants, we're hoping will still come in. And one question about state and federal grants, and it doesn't have to be answered here, because I see a lot of our department heads who might have better ideas. If there's any that we've been awarded and we have not spent yet or committed, we need to spend them. There's a lot of talk in Washington DC right now about clawing back federal awards, not just here, but at the airport and other areas, so we need to commit them and get them to use and not let them sit. I know sometimes it takes an RFP, sometimes let's put those grants to use, just like we had our transnet spending was a problem for a while. The money that we do have, I want to see making sure that we're actually using this fiscal year. So thank you very much for the briefing. I continue to, to look, to look, I look forward to continuing to work on this. I did not make any additional asks in my current budget priority memo, because we don't have the money for them. So I appreciate this, and I will look forward to continuing to work together to solve this.
I have a question about, to pick up where Councilmember Illo Rivera was discussing. I know you're looking at the holistic review and a broader package of multiple components that work together, but what would it have taken the mayor to increase the parking meters? Administrative regulation, or he has authority up to $2.50 an hour from the current 125, right?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. There's administrative authority to go from $1.25 to $2.50 per hour at meterheads.
Okay. And what would it have taken for him to actually do that?
I think the, the conversation around meterheads is a worthy one that we're having right now with the Sustainability and Mobility Department and other stakeholders. I think one of the things to consider with meterheads is that those dollars are restricted to be sent with, to be spent within the geographic zones that the parking meters operate. And so thinking through what are the eligible expenses on the general fund side that we can use to be deployed in those areas is one that we're trying to untangle now. In addition, the, the parking meter rate hasn't been increased for several decades, and so we're also thinking about benchmarking to other jurisdictions around where, what are they charging for parking? Is that above the administrative authority given to the mayor? How do we untangle all of those things together, knowing that there may be multiple bites at the apple? And so what is the holistic picture around how we bring all those things together, so we can put the city, the general fund, and our assets that we manage at the curb in a much better position?
Understood. I know it can't be spent on anything in the city. It has to be spent where you pay the parking meter, but those areas have lots of general fund needs that would free up money for other aspects. Again, what would it have taken for the mayor to just lift the dollar figure?
I think we really need to have this holistic conversation, Councilmember Campio.
Mr. Yagan, could he have just written a memo to the Department of Transportation and said, "Change the numbers to 250," and then they would have sent it out digitally, walked up in person, changed the collection number, and that's what it would have been, right?
Yeah, I don't know what the specific, is that, the answer is yes, Councilmember.
Okay. We got a memo saying to every department, "Look for 20% cuts." All it would have taken is a memo saying, "Let's lift these rates." And you saying, "We want to think about benchmarking." We have time to think about benchmarking, but we could have also brought, there could have also been, come forward an emergency ordinance to ask the council for authority to raise it higher, too. I think Councilmember Illo Rivera makes a great point that we are... to raise it higher, too. I think Councilmember Illo Rivera makes a great point that we are... We don't need the perfect solution that will be last for decades, like $1.25 has lasted for a long time at those meters. We need to be able to look our employees in the face and say, "We did everything possible to make sure we kept you on board to deliver core services." We need to be able to look our residents in the face and say, "We did everything possible before we had to cut your children's developmental program at a library." And I want, I don't want the next six months to be, as we get towards July 1st, we have a new fiscal year in place, to be, "We got to look at the program holistically." You have been looking at the program holistically for the last whole term. I know you have. We've had a million discussions. I want us to take actions that protect services. And I know if every time we're going to come to council to talk about the budget, it's going to be like, "We're thinking about it holistically." Piece by piece, we're going to help bridge the gap to get to a balanced budget. So, I really, really hope that... I don't need to hear that San Jose and Los Angeles and San Francisco and Oakland charge this much for us to somehow close a $258 million budget deficit. So, let's get on the ball. I agree with Councilmember Illo Rivera. I feel the same sentiment as him and would hope that an embracing of urgency does it because there's lots of problems that need a holistic approach, but that one is a small, low-hanging fruit we could have tackled six months ago, or excuse me, six weeks ago. Actually, we probably could have tackled it six months ago with a holistic review and an understanding of all these other cities and figured it out because we've had a budget, structural budget deficit for 30 years. The good news is the outlook is not the budget. They are just projections, and there's lots of things that are going to move forward. And I think what's important to me moving forward and important to my constituents is understanding that the hardest part of prioritizing spending is knowing that where you cut a dollar might end up costing you more than a dollar, so from expense, and then it costs you more than a dollar in revenue, and that's a failure. But where spending a dollar brings in more than a dollar in revenue, that's a success. And the difficult piece, part of piecing that together is knowing that typically you have to spend the dollar this fiscal year to see the result the following fiscal year when we have to balance it legally every single year. So, I would encourage us being laser-focused on what's in our control, the core services, making sure that we are funding things like public safety, infrastructure. I agree with many of the comments from my colleagues, and when it comes to homelessness services, we have a $9.8 million budget gap in current operations, and then, but we also have ideas about new facilities and expanded services. Seems that we got to fill the gap, I'll just take one more minute, fill the gap before we then start to make new ideas come to fruition when we have such a big budget gap on that aspect. So, I also didn't add anything to the budget priority memo amendment like Councilmember Von Wilbert mentioned with hers. And last but not least, pushing other levels of government to step up as well. The county has a long way to go to live up to their end of the bargain in our region. So, thank you to the IBA for your good work on this and for the many conversations over the last six weeks. I know it's not as simple as snapping your fingers to get it to 250, but a lot of my constituents are looking at that and saying, in a legalistic and operational manner, it kind of is. So, I hope we can work on that really quickly. Thank you.
The reality is that we will have a sizable budget deficit next year and every year after that in this outlook. As this outlook showcased, we definitely have significant work to do by fiscal year '26 to ensure that we identify adjustments that could be made so that there's no decrease in service levels to San Diegans. I will like to state that our number one asset are our workers. They do all the work, and we get to sit there and credit for a lot of the awards that the city of San Diego receives that really they did the work on. So, I believe that it's imperative that we bring in MEA and 127 to have some of these very difficult discussions, not only on the outlook, but also on the budget, since the budget has been brought up so much. I will leave that there. In the planned commitment section of the outlook, there's a $33.3 million project for the annualized cost for up to 1,000 new shelter beds. Given the budget projections for fiscal year '26 and the mayor's fiscal year '25 budget mitigation memo, this is a significant assumption to make for something that I view as uncertain. And I think that costs should not be included as a planned commitment until the council takes an action. That would result in such an expenditure. So, going into the next year and beyond, it's absolutely critical that the burden of potential budget reductions not fall on the back of underserved communities. For decades, even in years with major budget deficits, the city neglected to invest in communities south of the 8 with funding to build and maintain infrastructure like parks, libraries, sidewalks, and storm channels. The city has also failed to invest in programming at parks and recreation facilities in underserved communities, as highlighted in the City Auditor's 2022 Performance Audit of Equity and Recreational Programming. Capital improvement projects in underserved areas that have previously received funding must continue to move forward towards construction, and city efforts to increase programming at existing facilities that do not receive the same programming as more affluent communities must be a priority in the upcoming budget. In fact, in the planned commitment section, there are new facilities listed to be open in the next five years in underserved communities. In particular, in District 8, we have Hidden Trails Park. We have Byer Park on track to open up in the coming year, as well as other future facilities further out in the outlook. I am glad to see that because communities like Sandy Seadro have historically not received investment from the city in building new infrastructure, and it's long overdue, and we can't allow progress on them to slow down right now. Continuing to upgrade and properly maintain stormwater channels and drains is absolutely essential because such investment protects communities from devastated, devastating flood events. The city maintain, must remain dedicated to funding projects and maintenance efforts in Choyas Creek that will prevent the type of flooding that had occurred in the adjacent community to the watershed, including upgrades to the South Crest Rec Center area and the Beta Street Drainage Project, which are, which are both directly impacted by floodwaters from Choyas Creek. We must also address stormwater maintenance needs in other areas, such as the Juana River Valley, O'Tai Mesa, and Nestor, that will help prevent future flooding disasters. In order to ensure we can fund these critical activities, we need to be careful and deliberate in how we prioritize funding in fiscal year '26 and beyond. To close the budget deficit, we can't rely on across-the-board cuts, if I may have just two more minutes. To close the budget deficit, we can't rely on across-the-board cuts to city departments because such reductions will have a negative impact on underserved communities where the impact on reduced service levels will be felt the hardest. Budget cuts hit differently when you live in a community that already has parks and libraries. When they don't exist and projects get delayed because of budget reductions, it means another generation of San Diegans will go without access to the facilities they truly, in my heart, deserve. Ensuring these projects advance and are built will be my top priority within the timeframe of this outlook, particularly heading into fiscal year '26. Again, I know this is an informational item, and I do want to thank the department for your work in this outlook. We're having very difficult conversations, but I hope that we are having the same conversation because it seems like we're having two very different conversations, you know? One side of the coin, you're telling us there's no money. On the other side of the coin, not just us, you're telling the public. And on the other side of the coin, you're proposing to spend money, a significant amount of money on a yearly basis. So, it's difficult. It's difficult to have a conversation, an honest conversation. And this is, these are my comments in regards to the next five years, given the information that was provided to me. So, thank you, you guys. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
So, I think the urgency is where we're all at as well. Would love to work with you to make sure we move forward as quickly as we can on it, and still, at the same time, appreciate the work that you are doing because this is not easy for anyone, but we are, at the end of the day, all going to have to deal with it together. So, thank you, Council President, for your time.
I do understand that council can also increase the parking rates to 250 by a resolution, if the mayor does not do so administratively. Is that correct?
That is our understanding from the municipal code, Councilmember.
Okay. I would like to ask the IBA if you would take the lead in this and work with the appropriate staff to bring forward a reso to do so ASAP, please?
We will do that, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I think we can work out logistics on how we do that as we continue to move forward. But I do agree with the sense of urgency, and something as simple as moving that for, moving an administrative item forward would be helpful.
This is actually the first time that the full councils had a chance to weigh in on budget conversations. I know our budget chair is looking forward to the normal budget cycle going forward. I wanted to highlight that for the public, that we've tentatively scheduled for the IBA to present all of the council policies from our memos submitted last week at an evening meeting on February 10th, to kind of start the public conversation a little bit early and get, begin to get their input going forward. So, watch for news if we actually pull those pieces together. And I continue to work with our budget chair, Councilmember Foster, to make sure that we give the public as much opportunity as early as possible to begin to weigh in on these difficult conversations. I'll add just a few things. A lot of the things that my colleagues mentioned are embedded in my January 10th memo, including making sure that any cuts are not made in communities who do not have the wherewithal to recover from those kinds of cuts, reductions in city services, to have very much of an equity focus going forward, and be as strategic as possible and as data-driven in terms of where cuts are being made. Little did I know that when I worked on creating Measure C that was led by the Labor Council and the Building Trades way back when, that it would hopefully, or presumably, it finally emerge during this very, very critical moment, and hopefully, it does get through the legal system so that we can get the advantage of not the conventional set of components, but the homelessness and the road repair components going forward. And as I understand, Operations is already creating the mechanisms to do that delicate balance of capturing just the right portion of that TOT increase that can flow to the city's general fund. So, I appreciate that. I also noted that a lot of the presentation day is really kind of a repeat of the budget presentation that was done last year. You've taken a lot of input that isn't necessarily reflected in that. I know you're taking that, those comments very seriously. One particular one that I want to highlight is the Climate Action Plan, who may interpret the presentation that we're zeroing out our climate action efforts, but in fact, pure water is an important part of our climate action that is proceeding the pace. We also have a number of outside contracts in terms of delivering solar to our city buildings in some unique programs that I always forget the name of going forward. Energy-saving performance contracts, I presume a lot of that will go forward because that's not money out of our pocket today and will give us long-term savings. So, there are still a number of things, and I would even throw ZMBOP in there. If we're doing any replacement of gas utilities, we would replace them with electric if we can afford to do that replacement at all. So, that's the wild card there. I also do not want to undercut any of the things that my colleagues said because a lot of what they said is in my budget memo as well, but I also reflect on the fact that what has caused us to prevent resolving our structural deficit is reliance on one-time solutions, and some of the mitigation measures we talked are one-time solutions. As Councilmember Lee said, that suspending the reserve contribution is under good practice, and I do see Councilmember Campbell on the lights, is a one, hopefully a one-time idea, that any parking meter rate increases that we do and any additional excess equity that we create in FY '25 would be a one-time fix to FY '26, still leaving us wondering, what are we going to do for FY '27 going forward, unless there's other solutions. And I'm also supportive of that because I think it is more than just the dollars that you're talking about. It is the message to our city employees and the message to the public in terms of how we're reacting to this. And I think as my, some of my colleagues mentioned, some of the things we do is not a flip of the switch. There are complications that go with that, and I know it can be difficult to explain to the general public some of the nuances and gray areas and some of the actions that we take, and I'll take advantage of that three minutes as well. So, I look forward to more conversations. I think the council would be well-served to understand what is the cost of increasing the parking rate? Is it literally a message to a computer that then magically, through Wi-Fi, changes every single parking meter in the city, or is there some more operational cost involved in that that might be helpful to understand what those costs are? To the IBA, I assume the $800,000 a month that you were talking about preserves the 55-45 split?
That's correct, Council President. Just one additional note, parking meter revenue would be ongoing, or it could be. It's just the additional amount this year that you would look at as a one-time.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, just the FY '25 component would be the one-time. Everything else would be ongoing. So, I think I'll stop there. There's a lot more conversations. I look forward to hearing from my colleagues when the IBA brings a consolidation of all our budget memos and the harder conversations that we are going to be having going forward. I think the finance and the mayor's office got a taste of where my colleagues are. There'll be more blunt conversations as we see what the trade-offs are as we dive deeper into those budget conversations. So, I'll stop there. I appreciate Councilmember Foster being willing to lead the Budget Committee during this particularly challenging year and fiscal year budget that we'll have to deliver come June going forward. So, thank you for that, sir.
In terms of, I've been racking my brain trying to figure out more revenue, and I just want to very briefly say that on Measure C, which passed in 2020, I want to point out to the public, here's a problem where we, we voted overwhelmingly, almost 66%, to raise the TOT on tourists, on transit people, to 13.5% in the downtown area instead of what it is now, which I think is 10.5, isn't it? So, that would have helped tremendously. If in the past four years we had that revenue, we might not even be in this boat that we're in now. However, I must say, after having been dragged by people who are litigators through the courts, the city being dragged by litigators through the courts all these four years, and now the courts are, always seem to be siding with us that, yes, that was good, the people passed it, it passed, and we should do it, and now there's another appeal process, and it's going to take another several months, if not years, to get through this litigation on Measure C, at which time by now, we should be charging 15.5% TOT as other large be charging 15.5% TOT, as other large cities of our size does, do. So it's very frustrating. I just want the public to know the kinds of things that we go through. Another suggestion would be to put parking meters at the beaches. Many beach cities do this. You could put a time limit on it, something reasonable, so in case family wants to go and spend a half a day at the beach, they could without having to plug the meter again, but such as a four-hour, a four-hour stop or something like that. However, I would like the public to be aware that whatever we do at the beaches has to go through the Coastal Commission, the State of California Coastal Commission, and that often takes anywhere from one and a half to three years. And so therefore, we'd not be able to put that into effect, even if we pass it, until that time that the Coastal Commission gives us the okay, if they even do. Another thing that we could do is stop street sweeping on streets that are not signed for street sweeping. This has been a burr in my saddle ever since I got on council six years ago. At that time, we only had 10% of our streets signed. We have to have signs, no parking signs for the times of the street sweeping on the streets, or we cannot sweep them because the cars are in the way. Why does the city spend money, time, street sweepers, and employees going down the middle of streets that are parked on with a street sweeper when you can't clean from the middle of the street? You got to go to the curbs. Now, this is, this sounds like a small thing, but it would be millions of dollars per year. So I think we need to sign all those streets that our recent studies have shown need to be swept. Let us put the signs on all those streets and go ahead and clean them. Okay, that's, so that's another suggestion. Another one is, I found out in my own district, a couple of places we could raise permit fees. For 15 years, the permit fees on boats stopping at the 12 sandbars in Mission Bay have not had their fees raised for 15 years. And we need to update the system by which we keep track of this so that those who no longer have their boats there can give their slot up to somebody who's on the waiting list. So we need, we need to do a lot of work in this area, and I want to applaud the lifeguards who recently went around and cleaned up all the old and broken boats out of these places so that we could get ready to figure out how much we could charge in a fee because, as the public mayor may not know, we are not allowed to make a profit in the city on what we charge you. We only can recover the cost that it costs the city to do it. So we need to upgrade that, and we also have boat parking at other places along Mission Bay, but we also need to look at those fees. So there's a couple of things in my, in my district, along with the street sweeping that I've seen go on in my district down the middle of a street, that we definitely need to work on. So thank you very much, Council President. That's all I'm going to say right now.